We're gonna start with, there's nothing to talk about the whole legislation. So, the first one is Council of Representatives.
Alright, so everyone got the email that I forwarded from Ms. Bertel about the Northfield Historical Society, so that's all in order. So, I'd like to move this to second and third reading if possible, just so we can get that out. It's the same amount as we did the last two years. As you saw, they were able to put it to good use. Ms. Bertel also told me in a follow-up email from that that they had eighteen new members join this year for their historical society. So, that's really great for them. So, I think us and the other communities being able to put a little money towards them really helps, you know, considering their budget was zero before.
Right.
So, let's do two and three on that if everyone's okay.
Alright, um, the SALT program, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, this is definitely a housekeeping thing. This is our yearly permission to participate in the ODOT-SALT contract for twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm asking for four thousand tons to be a part of that contract, and we will be on the hook to purchase up to eighty-five percent of that, so.
Okay. Do we need to do this tonight?
A- a- actually, yeah.
Think it's May.
Because it's like May seventh or something, is when I need to get paperwork in.
Alright, we'll do one, two, three on that.
That's why it's an emergency, too.
Yep, that's why, that's why I was asking.
Not so likely.
Second one looks like it's you as well.
Yeah, um, so this is the purchase of a Vaccon jetter, a trailer-mounted sewer jetter. Really, since I've come here, I was kinda surprised we didn't have one yet. We are responsible for the storm sewers in the city and, you know, driveway drainage and catch basins and things like that. And it's, this would just open up the ability to be able to clean a pipe if we need to. Well, I know we need to. So, and we're coming out of spring, you know, we just went through, and the whole timeline, you know, the guys are like, what the heck, what he wants to do, you know, so we really need a piece of equipment that's the proper piece of equipment, rather than trying to like shovel, shovel down a pipe or anything like that. So, you know, we appreciate it. It is on Sourcewell contract, and it's purchased through best equipment.
And?
And the money is covered already.
From?
From Stormwater Fund.
Yeah, from last year, we had a little bit extra from a actual storm sewer project.
I can tell you all that there's projects right now we can use this piece of equipment for, in my service experience, I didn't even know we didn't have one, so I'm a little surprised that it took this long, but, you know, instead of replacing a pipe, we can jet it out and get a better idea. And the thing that sold me on it was, they were shoving a camera into one of the sewers to see what's going on, and they're trying to push the obstruction with the camera. I'm like, whoa.
Yeah, I pulled up on John, like, hey, hey, whoa, guys, you know, this camera costs money, too.
But this'll save us a lot in the future.
Um, anyone have any questions?
I have one question. Is this gonna take a long time to get, like, all the other equipment?
Actually, um, part of going with this one, this particular company has it in stock.
Oh, wow.
It was in Indianapolis, he was going to go bring it here, just to have it on their lot for us, but yeah, it's, it's ready to roll.
And I'm assuming, because it's an emergency, we want one, two, three?
That would be great.
Alright. Uh, the next one is the Fire Department Lieutenant. You or?
I'll start, we can add to it. Essentially, we have a lieutenant who wants to go into the Fire Prevention Bureau. In the fire contract, it states that they cannot lose that rank if they transfer over to that. Instead of creating a fourth lieutenant, we're just saying, this kind of puts it in the context that we can have that happen and go there without violating the contract. So, I'm sure the legalities of it, he may add to it, but that's the simplest way to put it.
Yeah, so, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but you basically have a lieutenant per station right now?
Per shift, yeah.
Per shift, and you wanna maintain a lieutenant every shift. So, if one of those moves over to Fire Prevention Bureau, working forty hours to maintain a third shift lieutenant, we're allowing essentially a fourth lieutenant if one of those moves over. It's only effective if somebody moves over to Fire Prevention Bureau.
Oh, got it.
And this was necessitated by the retirement Inspector Caitlin.
Wow, okay. Anyone have any questions? I'm gonna be looking for, in terms of passage, first read more?
The sooner you do it, the sooner you can move over.
Right. Anyone object to one, two, three?
Nope.
Alright. Alright, the last one, um, this, I believe, is property from the Fire Department, right?
Correct.
Would you like to talk to it?
Our two thousand excursion, yes, it's older than most of my staff at this point. It's what we used to use as a shift commander car, then it became like an extra car, people would take classes. We even quit doing that, we won't take it on long trips. Hundred and eighty-three thousand miles, it should be in your legislation. The vehicle to replace that, the Tahoe is currently a falls-away equipment, you need outfitted with lights. The other vehicle is a pickup truck sitting out, I think it's sitting right out here. That's a two thousand fourteen, it's rusty, like pickup truck. To point to where the running board fell off on the passenger side, a little embarrassing to drive around. There is a vehicle on order to replace that also.
And I'm assuming one, two, three, just to be listed?
Doesn't matter, I'm not gonna sell it until the other vehicle's here in any service.
Anybody object to doing this one tonight? Alright, I think that's it, unless anyone else has anything else they wanna talk about.
I decided to take on another project. It may sound a little ridiculous, but we'll see how it rolls. I was involved in a very minor accident a week ago today. I mean, just like cosmetic damage, I was still up and running that day. I have received in the last twenty-four hours, since the fire, since the police department plugged that into the state, thirty to thirty-five-plus calls from either insurance companies, lawyers, or doctors' offices. Obscene. I even had a woman cuss me out and hang up on me because I asked her who she represented. I have already talked to Senator Roganer's office, and Steve Demetrio had his people call me back after I got through talking to him. I am gonna start a process, however long it takes me, maybe more than my lifetime, to try to make this a law against non-solicited correspondence when you get involved in an accident. I suggest that anybody that gets in a motor vehicle accident, do not put your cell number on the police report, put the number to the State Attorney General's office, let them take all their calls. End of my report.
Did Ms. call you?
Somebody else asked me if Ms. Neecall me. Steve Demetrio asked me if Ms. Neecall me, I says, no.
Hurt in a car, call KNO, they call?
Yeah.
We're good.
Eventually, I'd like to get a resolution, once I get some feedback from the legislature.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the April 24th City Council Meeting. It is 7:30 PM. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt.
Mr. Barraro.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Mr. Winter.
Here.
Now I ask Chaplain O'Brien to lead us in the invocation.
As we gather here today, we do so with a shared commitment to serve our community with wisdom, integrity, and compassion. May we be guided by a spirit of unity and purpose, seeking solutions that uplift every resident and strengthen the bonds that connect us. Let our discussions be filled with respect and understanding, knowing that our decisions shape the future of our city and there will be one of those who call it home. Amen. And now our mayor will offer the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. We certainly appreciate you. Okay, next on our list is a proclamation, which I will read.
Good enough. Thank you.
Whereas the city of Macedonia understands that trees are more than landscape, they are legacy, protecting our waterways, shading our streets, sheltering wildlife, and enriching the lives of every citizen, young and old. And whereas Macedonia has made a continued commitment to growing and protecting its urban canopy, reflecting values of sustainability, beauty, and care for the natural world. And whereas the city's Parks and Recreation Department, city staff, volunteers, and residents have worked hand-in-hand to protect, plant, and preserve trees throughout Macedonia, reinforcing our belief that a greener city is a stronger, healthier city for all. And whereas in recognition of our city's dedication to sound forestry management and environmental stewardship, the Arbor Day Foundation has once again honored Macedonia with the distinction of Tree City USA for the year of 2024, a title we wear with pride and purpose. Now therefore, I, Nick Molnar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, Ohio, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2025, as the official date to honor Macedonia's recognition as 2024 Tree City USA, and encourage all residents to take part in this mission, to plant with purpose, to care for what grows, and stand together in support of a greener, healthier, and more vibrant Macedonia. Congratulations on, you know, Parks and Rec and service are a big piece of that. I must add one little thing. If you drive down Crow Drive, this is like my favorite time of year, the trees that blossom, I don't know what type of tree there, but it's the white flowering trees. It is the most beautiful thing when you see that in a residential neighborhood with the mature trees and the beautiful white flowers around them. So if you have a chance to check it out, if you like trees, go take a look. I think it's pretty cool. Okay, next up is Approval Minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, April 10th regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments, we have one tonight. We ask you to come to the microphone, give your name and address, and keep it to five minutes or less. And we have one, Deborah McColsky. Very formal today, Deborah.
Well, my name is Deborah McColsky, and I am the current president of Longwood Manor Historical Society, and I have our annual report. The acquisitions we have received, items belonging to Colonel Long, period furniture pieces, linens for our ladies' tea and any event planning, multiple items related to President Nixon's visit to Macedonia, and historical newspaper articles, two Richard Sedlon prints from Bedford Historical Society, and a handkerchief quilt. Events, we hosted seven open houses, an annual ladies' tea with servers from the local Eastern Star Rainbow Girls group, participated in the Northfield Memorial Day Parade, and later reads at the Colonel's grave. We hosted outdoor University Heights Symphonic Band Concert, Missing Soldiers Table, book talk and signing with local author Michael Shesky, rummage sales, participated in Fall Fest and Winter Fest, hosted the Altered Group of Teens from Our Lady of Guadalupe Church aiding us with window washing and chimney cleanout, Haunted Manor and Halloween with the Recreation Department, and annual Christmas open house with Santa and the craft store. Our financials, we added $2,594.75 to our bank account, ending with $7,471.95 plus the $100 from NOPEP grant, and we still have $1,985.07 from the city money, of which we were using towards the 60-40 Ohio Historical Grant. We submitted 990N and charitable registration annual reports. Our nonprofit status is current until 2/15/2026. We submitted our Ohio Historical Connection Grant on 9/10/2024. The QR code continues to be used as a PayPal donations. Insurance and post office box, LMHS carries liability policy through Westfield Insurance, general liability policy with $2 million per occurrence and $5 million aggregate per year. Policy costs $541 per year. We also maintain a post office box at Macedonia Post Office. The LMHS meetings held March through November. Mayor Molnar attended two meetings last year, April and August, and multiple meetings with Samantha Edgar at the Recreation Center to discuss the grant. The Manor updates for last year were monthly checks of fire extinguishers, CO2 detector, security lights, furnace filters. Every other month, we checked and cleaned out the sun pump. Fire inspection was completed on September 13th, but we have yet to receive the report. Window locks continue to be researched, replaced, and restored. We just sent some to a local fabricator in hoping that we can fabricate them and just make them look brass. Let's see, okay, workdays are on every Tuesday from June to September, and we're working on the first and second floors. Preventative maintenance contracts on the furnace through Jackson Comfort Systems. The furnace was replaced at end of the year. There was CO2 leakage in it, and it quit. Thank you to the city for covering this expense. Service Department aided in removal of two fin heaters, two radiators, and hoses while equipment was available at time of tree removal and cleanup of the front property. Purchased special bulbs and end caps from upstairs bathrooms, and that was what we used our NOPEP grant for, and it was over $1,000 for those. Drain cover for the basement, gutter, and chimney cleanout, repaired hole in roof and screened, screening applied over vent to eliminate entry of birds. Marketing and media, LMHS is a member of the Nordonia Chamber of Commerce and Northeast Ohio Inner Museum Council, as advertised in their booklet, and this is the booklet here. Web page and Facebook presence advertised in Macedonia Rec Guide and on City Post, attended events and meetings of other local historical societies, and multiple articles published in Sagamore Voice, Nordonia Hills News, Nordonia Rec Guide, Nordonia E-Messenger, Akron Beacon Journal, The Scene Magazine, and Nordonia E-News. Miscellaneous. Submitted pictures to Applebee's Restaurant for their redesign with two pics on display. Clearing of land in front of Manor and new sign thanks to the city. Participated in recycle programs of metal paint and fluorescent bulbs. Leftover Halloween candy and candy canes donated to, that were left over, were donated to the Emergency Assistance Center, and pollinator garden was constructed around the sundial by Girl Scouts. The officers for 2024 with Deb McColsky re-elected president, vice president, vice president of operations, not filled, and Dorothy Berman re-elected secretary treasurer. We have six to seven active members who give up their time to help. Our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan revised, it's culminating with the Manor restored and event planned for April 20th, 2026. We may have to work on that since we did not get the grant. We're applying for that again this year. To commemorate, the April 20th, 2026 will be the anniversary of the building. LMHS plans to continue coordinating events with the Macedonia Parks and Recreation, community and other groups, preserve and continue to acquire artifacts relating to Colonel Long and Macedonia, increasing membership, volunteers, and student participation in research, and pursue brick and mortar 60-40 matching grant from Ohio Historic Connection. We were not awarded the grant in 2024, but will re-imply in September with our Altered 56-page application. We had 1,159 hours logged in on the premise for volunteer hours, and then there was hours that we did off-campus. LMHS is very appreciative of the cooperation received from Jason Chadock, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Samantha Edgar, marketing and special events coordinator, and the support of the City of Macedonia Administration and Service Department. We especially thank Mayor Molnar for his support for the cleaning of trees and shrubs as well as the brick signage to bring attention to the beautiful jewel of the city. Many thanks to the support of the community and the members of LMHS and their numerous volunteer hours given. It was not long ago that this architectural and historic gift from the first mayor of Macedonia was marked for destruction. We are also grateful for the hard work, labor, and struggle of all the former and deceased members of this group who tirelessly helped to save a piece of important history for our community. We are forever grateful to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you, everything you're doing, and I had the opportunity to drive by last night to see the illuminated new sign, and I thought it looked great, so I think it's a nice little addition to what we have there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is Correspondence from the Clerk.
Yes, I have one item this evening. This was to the Macedonia Fire Department. On behalf of the entire Molnar family, we'd like to extend a thank you to the entire department for not only all you do for the city and residents of Macedonia, but specifically all you've done for my father Nicholas Molnar over the years. My parents, Nick and Jeanette, have lived on Tanglewood Road for nearly 66 years until my father passed on March 28th of this year. Over the last several years, your squad has been frequent visitors to 9158 Tanglewood, helping my dad after falls, taking him to the hospital, or a variety of other reasons for which he's been called. My father was a proud resident of Macedonia, served on city council for 20 years, and was proud to call Macedonia home. Thanks for all you do. Sincerely, David Molnar. That is it.
Thank you. Pending our new legislation, starting with Ordinance Number 23.
I'd like to offer Ordinance 23, 2025, for its second and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance appropriating funds for the preservation of City of Macedonia historical items by the Historical Society of Old Northfield.
Counselor Brandt.
This is an ordinance that we've done similar in the past two years, appropriating $500 to go towards the Northfield Historical Society. They maintain historical records for the City of Macedonia. Macedonia used to be a part of Northfield, so we felt that it's a worthwhile cause for us to help support. They give us information every year about what the money goes to. They're always trying to fix up their building, keep it watertight, and preserve the records better for us, so that's why we're putting this out there to give them $500 again this year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law, Ordinance 23, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 23 carries. Ordinance Number 25. 28.
28, yep. I move to offer Ordinance Number 28, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to participate in the ODOT road salt contract awarded in 2025.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is just a housekeeping annual thing that we ask for, to participate in the ODOT road salt contract, to purchase 4,000 tons of, up to 4,000 tons of salt, and at least 85% of that for the '25-'26 winter season.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 2020, I'm sorry, Ordinance Number 28, 2025, and post same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 28 carries. Ordinance 29.
Mayor, I offer Ordinance 29, 2025, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Best Equipment Company, Inc., for the purchase of a VACCOM jetter for the City of Macedonia Department of Public Service.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, counsel, this is a piece of equipment that the Service Department could really use. It is a trailer-mounted jetter for cleaning pipes up to 24 inches. I believe it has 500 feet of hose, which is way farther than we'll ever have to go. I was always amazed we didn't really have one here, when we are responsible for keeping storm sewers flowing. We just went through a pretty rough spring, and it was a piece of equipment we really could have used, so we would be grateful to have it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, residents, this is for storm sewers, not for the sewer in your front yard that belongs to, the maintenance of that is the City of Akron sewer.
Correct. Some accounting does handle sanitary sewer.
Yeah, I think a lot of communities, the city handles sanitary sewer, and I think we might have used to do it, but, just so people know, this is just for the sewers that go parallel to your house, not for particular.
Correct.
Thank you. And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass Ordinance 29, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 29 carries. Ordinance Number 30.
Mayor, I'd like to offer Ordinance Number 30, 2025, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending Section 153.01 of the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia relative to fire department lieutenants.
Chief Ripley and/or Director Godetti.
Thank you, Director, and Mayor. This is to essentially add a lieutenant to the Fire Prevention Bureau, which is necessitated by the retirement of our, excuse me, our former inspector. It's only, the position is only filled when that lieutenant will be in the Fire Prevention Bureau, and it's an allowance in the collective bargaining agreement with the union. Any else, Mark?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I would move that we pass and post according to law, Ordinance 30, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 30 carries. Resolution 31.
I move to offer Resolution Number 31, 2025, for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the disposition of certain municipal property by the City of Macedonia in accordance with City of Macedonia codified ordinance Section 121.05 and Ohio Revised Code Section 721.15.
Chief Ripley.
Yes, this is dispose of a 2000 Ford Excursion that had been used by our department initially as a primary response vehicle, and then had been relegated down to staff movements for classes. Currently is relegated to city use only. It currently has 181,000, 183,000. We've gotten a lot of use out of it, being 25 years old. The other vehicle's a 2014 F-350 pickup. If you can imagine, it was a plow truck we used during blizzard-type conditions to get us to calls, and the salt has taken a beating on it, so it is being replaced, and both those vehicles are en route to us now, the replacement status.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 31, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 31 carries. Any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll go into the mayor's report. I'll be briefed tonight, because there's a little thing called the draft, and I'm gonna do the crystal ball. I think we're taking Travis Hunter, the number two pick, so you can check me on that one for the next meeting. Public Safety Telecommunications Week was last week, paying honor to our dispatchers. They have a very difficult job, and I want to point out, you know, that's a chaotic area, and I go in there sometimes while they're in action. I couldn't do that. That's just too much going on, and I get anxious just being around it, because the things they juggle in there and the work that they do to keep us safe is paramount, and I can't, I can't thank them enough for all that they do, so thank you to all of them for that. I also want to point out International Firefighters Day on May 4th coming up, because our next council meeting, oh, it'll be after that, but I want to point out that we want to honor our firefighters as well. There are a lot of hard-working folks that we need their help, and the dispatchers help support that function, and it's a really, really great department we have here, and I can't thank them enough for all the work they do. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put the phones down and drive the car. Committee reports.
Cemetery Commission will be meeting here directly before the next council meeting on May 8th.
Thank you. Okay, moving to department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, just like to thank council for passing legislation, all the support and service department, and everything we ask, and also, part of that is take a look at the new trucks on their way out. There's a lot of money sitting out there. And, but, it's really exciting when we wait two years on some equipment and it gets here, so we have some new salt trucks, but they're also, they're hook lift trucks, so the beds swap out, and we can use them for dump trucks, or V-boxes, or a flatbed, or whatever, so. And then also just the mulch and brush pile in the dumpsters are still open at 9,000 Valley View Road for the next two Saturdays, from 7:30 to 3:30, and then obviously through the week, Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 3:30 also, so everyone take advantage of the spring cleanup and get your mulch and all that stuff.
End of report. Thank you. I want to reiterate that. It took two years to get the equipment we need to do our jobs. Director Gilati.
Yes, the long-awaited paving of Ledge Road is now scheduled to start the week of May 12th, and just to remind everyone, I know we talked about this once before, but so there's no confusion, we'll be paving a portion of ledge in between North Bedford and Shepherd Road. That still leaves a little section of ledge between the old railroad bridge and North Bedford Road. That smaller section will be paved later this year separately. End of report.
Thank you. We will get a lot of questions about that.
Yes, I'm certain that we will, and we're going to communicate it upfront, and we'll still get a couple of questions.
Do you have information, ODOT's been going to be doing some paving coming up too, right?
They are. They're going to be paving on Route 82 west of Route 8, so about 99.9% of that work is going to be in Northfield Center or Sagamore. So that's scheduled to start the week of May 19th.
Thank you. Interim Director Edgar.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight was our first food truck Thursday that will begin our series, so that will run through August, the last Thursday of the month, in the MacRaeck parking lot, starting at 5:00 PM. We've got Spring Fest that's going to happen this Saturday. The event itself is 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, but we do have park cleanup that kicks off before that, 9:00 AM to noon, just kind of a drop-in that'll be happening in our parks, so Longwood, Sugar Bush, and Veterans is included in that as well. And we are in the process of hiring for summer staff, camp counselors, rec leaders, name it, we need them, so that's it. End of report.
Thank you.
Is there a sign-up for cleanup this year, or do you just show up, or what?
There is a registration online, like with our typical hobby view registration, but, I mean, you can just call and let them know, or even just show up. We've got plenty of supplies. Just stop in at the front desk, grab your stuff, and head to whatever location you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. Macedonia resident refunds are due July 15th, unless you have an extension from Rita. End of report.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. Thirty-eight help desk tickets since the last meeting's major projects include updating our hardware maintenance contracts. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, we started sending out the mailing for the sidewalk program. This is the second letter going out. The letter outlines the process, including the timeframe for completion and payment. Also, it's going to include the new fee, which is much, much lower than expected. I had quite a few residents that were made aware of the new fee. They're very, very pleased. A resident just today told me that the price that we quoted him for replacing was cheaper than the cost that he had for leveling it, so I think everybody's going to be pleasantly surprised by the new allowance that we have.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR continues to be very busy, and due to a recent notice for retirement, HR has posted for a replacement, and we received over 350 applications, resumes for that position, and we have narrowed it down to our top five, and we did virtual interviews, and now next week we will start in person. Patty has agreed to graciously stay a little longer than the normal six months to help us get the next person up and running and be able to make a smooth transition, so it's kind of bittersweet. We're happy to see after 30 years that she gets to go into retirement, but we're going to be sad to see her go, so I will keep you posted as that gets closer.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. End of report.
Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned earlier, May 4th, National Firefighters Day. Light the night for fallen firefighters is April 27th through May 4th, which is light buildings red. Christie, our communications director, had the idea on Monday, and I shared it with Dan Wilson and some of the staff of service on Tuesday, and they've already coordinated, and this building itself will be lit for the week in red, thanks to Dan and his staff, very, very, very short notice, so very thankful for that. And also, the hydrant crew has completed, yes, it's still April, and they have completed hydrant flushing in the City of Macedonia, moving next to Northfield Center. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Yakapovich.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to thank the Service Department as well. I understand from Chief Ripley that you've got blue balls as well for Police Week, so that'll be coming. Also, we, the Civil Service Commission met last night, and they approved an entrance examination for hiring emergency dispatchers, so you can watch the city's website. We'll be advertising that soon. End of report.
Thank you. Director Godetti. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Or a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.